Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hi, allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, with which it is founded, with which it is just as strong.
Thank you. Emergency exits are located in the back and to the front on the sides. Any correspondence that can be posted is posted. Mr. Gavin, I'm going to turn it over to you for recognition of students.
Thank you very much, Madam President. We are excited here tonight to have two different groups of students that are going to be recognized. I would like to introduce Dr. Zuar first to give us a little bit of an intro to some of our special guests from the middle school.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. Thank you, Board of Education. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. One of the great things about the Broadway Review, which is a tradition at Southside Middle School, which happened exactly a month ago, this past weekend, the first weekend in November, is that it gives our students the opportunity to shine in a more particular way than when we do the Spring Musical, which is a book show. Typically, there are lead roles and everybody else is the chorus. But in the Broadway Review, our directors, Mrs. Monsour and Ms. Elias, actually construct a show that features individual solos, duets, trios, quartets, small groups of singers, and the whole group so that they shine as individuals. So that's the great thing about the Broadway Review. And I want to recognize Anna Elias and Jen Monsour because they actually write the show based on who they have to be in the show. And I think of, I'm showing my age, I'm sorry, Mickey Rooney and Judy Garland, who get together, I think of them in the summer saying, hey, kids, let's put on a show. I have an auditorium at Southside Middle School and we can put on a show. And they invent the idea and write the script. So here's the premise that they came up with. A bunch of families are on a cruise ship and the kids are driving the parents crazy because they will not get off their phones. And so this is the setup for this number. These are the parents. And by the way, in about 30 years, you will appreciate this song even more when you have kids. And honestly, all of you parents out there, how many times have you said something and said, oh, my God, I'm turning into my mother, I'm turning into my father? Well, this is the moment in the show. Enjoy it.
Kids, I don't know what's wrong with these kids today. Kids, who can understand anything they say? Kids, all they care about is their time that's on their phone. Snapchat, Instagram, TikTok. While we're on the subject, kids, you can talk and talk to your face too blue. Kids, but they still just do what they want to do. Why can't they be like we were, perfect in every way? What's the matter with kids today? Kids, I don't know what's wrong with these kids today. Kids, they're not perfect. Kids, they're so ridiculous and so immature. I don't see why anybody wants that. Why is it dreadful? Kids, what the devil wrong with these kids today?
tell us about all of our wonderful athletic accomplishments this fall season.
Kids, it turned out this way. Why can't they be like we were, perfect in every way?
Good afternoon, or evening.
What's the matter with kids today?
It is my pleasure to introduce this next group of student athletes to honor their outstanding achievements. To start us off, I would like to invite Olivia Moran to join me at the podium on up lip. So in November, Olivia and both Tommy Gentile, who couldn't be here tonight, signed their
Before we take a little photo op right here, I do want to thank the middle school cast and teachers. I had a chance to see the review. It was wonderful. The kids were so talented. You could tell they were having a great time like you can tell they're having right now.
official national letter of intent to play Division One Athletics at the collegiate level.
And they offer a word of caution to all of our parents out there. We weren't perfect and neither are they.
Tommy will be going to Boston University to play D1 Boys Lacrosse, and Olivia will be
But it's really fun and we have a great time together. So congratulations, guys. Let's take a quick picture.
going to the University of Virginia to be on the Division One Girls Crew Team.
We can clap for that. Good job.
Absolutely. Needless to say, signing to play at this level is a testament to their skill, their extreme dedication over the years, and their pure personal grit. We would all like to congratulate you and your families on your achievement thus far in your athletics and academic career. So congratulations, Olivia and Tommy. She's heading out to Best Buddies Dance because she's the president. Before I begin speaking about our Fall 2022 Individual All County or Above Athletic Accomplishments and our County Championship and State Qualifying Team, I am proud to announce that Southside High School has been recognized once again by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as a Scholar-Athlete Team School of Distinction for the 21-22 school years. To qualify as a School of Distinction, 100% of all athletic teams had to earn Scholar-Athlete Team recognition during the Fall, Winter, and Spring of last year. Southside Scholar-Athletes teams last year included Boys and Girls Basketball, Boys and Girls Cross Country, Boys and Girls Lacrosse, Boys and Girls Soccer, Boys and Girls Swimming and Diving, Boys and Girls Tennis, as well as Boys Golf, Baseball, Wrestling, and Football, and Girls Cheerleading, Volleyball, Gymnastics, and Softball. So our athletes are not only fabulous on the field, but they, in the classroom as well. So congratulations to Southside and all of our athletes. In addition, this is something I take pride in, for the third time, Southside High School Athletics has been recognized as a stay-in-the-game sportsmanship school for our positive behavior on the field, court, track, mat, and course throughout the 21-22 school year. Congratulations. So now it is my pleasure to introduce this next group of student athletes and to honor them for their outstanding achievements during the Fall of '22. Through a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication, on and off-season, all of these individuals earned All County or Above honors. Although he could not be here tonight because he is playing off-season volleyball, I would like to acknowledge the accomplishments of Alex Vargas from the first-ever Boys Volleyball Team. Coach DeAngelo reported that at the start of the season, Alex was the only player on the team who had any volleyball experience, and he did everything asked of him, both offensively and defensively. He was the only player who played six rotations in every game and was first in serves received and second in kills, digs, and aces. But most importantly, he always offered to help his teammates get better, and his skill and selflessness did not go unnoticed as he earned All County honors this season. So congratulations to Alex and the Boys varsity volleyball team. Now I would like to acknowledge the efforts of four athletes from the Girls Volleyball Team, who also could not be here tonight because they are playing off-season volleyball. Junior Kira Burke was a three-year varsity starter and a team captain this year. Kira ran offense for the Cyclones and led the team in block assists and ranked second in assists. She has been awarded All County honors. Junior Kate Bradley was a three-year varsity starter and led the Cyclones in both aces and assists. As the team's quarterback, she gracefully led the offensive charge and helped the Cyclones to a county final during the 2022 season, earning All County honors. Senior and outside hitter Ava Kelly was a captain and four-year varsity athlete who has been recognized by Nassau County as one of the top attackers in volleyball. She helped the Cyclones to a second-place finish in Nassau County this season. She was named by the county coaches two years in a row as an All County Player. And finally, Junior Sophia Vargas was a three-year varsity starter and outside hitter for the Cyclones and was a statistical team leader in both digs and kills. Sophia has been named All County for the 2022 season. So congratulations to Kira, Kate, Ava, and Sophia and the Girls varsity volleyball I now invite Coach Steve Smalldon and players Jack Lozito and Mike Malconian to join me. Jack Lozito is a two-year member of the varsity football team. As a junior this season, he was selected as co-captain and finished with 121 carries for 807.3 yards and eight touchdowns. Those would be great statistics for anyone playing a full season, but Jack compiled these numbers in just five games when an ankle injury ended his '22 campaign. He currently ranks sixth on the all-time rushing yards in a season chart, which we are all sure he will continue to climb as a senior. His efforts this season, even out injured, earned him All County recognition. Mike Malconian is a two-year member of the varsity football team. As a junior this year, he set the single-season receiving record for Southside football with 30 receptions, 721 yards, and nine touchdowns. An injury in the last regular-season game halted what would have earned him the receiving yards in a career record as well. Luckily for us, he has another shot next year to break that record. His efforts earned him All County honors and a nomination for the Pizzarelli New York Jets Receiver Award, which is given to Nassau County's top receiver. So congratulations to Jack and Mike and the varsity football team. I would now like to call to the podium Coach Pat Corvetti, who was named Conference Coach of the Year for the second year straight, and Player Ryan McNicholas from the Boys Soccer Team. Senior Ryan McNicholas was a four-year varsity soccer athlete, a captain, and one of the best all-around players for the Cyclones. Ryan has an extremely high soccer IQ, was on Newsday's preseason Top 100 Boys Soccer Athletes to Watch, and scored eight goals with four assists this season. Coach stated that Ryan was a large part of the team's 11 wins this season and playoff berth. Ryan was recognized by the coaches in Nassau County for two years in a row as an All County Player. Congratulations, Ryan. I would also like to mention one other athlete who couldn't be here tonight because he's playing off-season. Senior Gavin Goodlab was a captain and the team's leading goal scorer for the last two years. He posted 13 goals and eight assists, forging the Cyclones into the playoffs. Gavin was on Newsday's preseason Top 100 Boys Soccer Athletes to Watch, was selected as a Conference Offensive Player of the Year, and as an All County Athlete. So congratulations, not only to Coach Corvetti, but Ryan and Gavin and the Boys Soccer Team. Now I would like to call to the podium Coach Judy Croteir and Morgan Harloff from the Varsity Girls Soccer Team. Morgan was a three-year member of the Varsity Girls Soccer Team. Morgan's defensive mindset, combined with her athletic ability and soccer skills, made her a key defender throughout Nassau County Division A Soccer. She reads the game well, is physical, and leads the Cyclones' defense confidently. Her work ethic and ability to shut down top offensive threats has earned her the Conference A Defensive Player of the Year and All County honors. Congratulations, Morgan. I would like to mention three other soccer athletes who couldn't be here tonight because they're either doing off-season soccer or playing in the basketball game. Nora Basil was a junior captain and three-year varsity starter. She led by example and was able to connect the lines of field. She was a constant worker and made those around her better. Nora tallied 16 goals and 11 assists during her sophomore and junior years. She is recognized as a threat and top player by opposing teams, earning her a spot as a member of the New York State Girls Soccer Third Team and All County honors. Charlie Daresti was a three-year member and junior captain, who was a leader both on and off the field. She led by example, organizing and running the midfield and defense, playing on both offense and defense. Her athletic ability and strong soccer skills have earned her All County honors this season. And Maggie Coven was a four-year varsity player who has been an important and impactful player for the Cyclones. She was strong, quick, and had a knack for scoring. During her junior and senior seasons, she scored 12 goals and had three assists. She was the captain whose hard work earned her All County honors. So congratulations to Morgan, Nora, Maggie, and Charlie and the Varsity Girls Soccer Team. We have one more group. So now, it is my pleasure to introduce your state qualifying, Division, Conference, and Nassau County Championship Varsity Girls Cross Country Team, coached by Chris Webster, who was named County Class II Coach of the Year, and assisted by Nicole Tufano and Bruce Heckler. Ladies, would you join me and Coach Webb up here? Okay. The Girls Cross Country Team continues to thrive in what Coach Webb calls "the ongoing golden age of Southside cross country." The Girls have won the County Championship the last three years in a row and has accumulated an incredible record of 52 wins and zero losses during the last four years. Once again, their dedication and drive resulted in the COVIDed triple-play. They were Division Champions, Conference Champions, and County Champions, and then represented Nassau County at the state level, where they finished with an impressive fifth place. This amazing team continues to attract new, talented runners into their family. On this year's County and State Championship teams, three out of seven members were brand-new to the team. These three members quickly showed their competitive spirit and winning approach to teamwork, and as a result, the team was once again unstoppable. The coaches expressed that there is much more to this team than victory. This is a team that is a family. They work together, they make each other better runners, and they make each other better humans. The discipline they practice on the course transfers off the course, as they are all academic scholars as well. Coach Webb has long said it is his privilege, not his job, to coach this team. And by the way, this team has a record of 323 wins to 45 losses since record-keeping began in 1995. So that is pretty impressive. So now, I'd like to introduce the teams. Ladies, when you hear your name, just take a step forward. Okay. Faola Allison, who also earned All County and All Conference as an individual and was a state qualifying runner. Claire Bohan, who also earned All County and All Conference as an individual and was a state qualifying runner. Cameron Coletti, who also earned All County and All Conference as an individual, served as captain and finished in the top 20 at the state championship. She was also named by Newsday as a member of the All Long Island Cross Country Team. Lana Jewett, who also earned All County and All Conference as an individual and was a state qualifying runner. Hannah Riley, who, as a first-year member, ran as part of our County Championship Team. Olivia Sclary earned All Conference as an individual and served as a team captain. And Emma Sitterly, who also earned All Conference as an individual. Emma also showed sacrifice as she traveled to the state championships as an alternate. She was not able to run the race, but continued to practice and work with the team in case the team needed an alternate. Let's give a big round of applause to the Girls Cross Country, County Champions, and State contenders, and their coach. This concludes my Fall Athletic Accomplishment presentation. Athletes, congratulations once again on all of your outstanding achievements. I hope you all have a great evening and a very happy and healthy new year to come.
You guys are leaving? You don't want to stay? I would thank all of our athletes and our parents and our coaches for working together to achieve a common goal. All of our students worked hard. This work didn't just start September 1st. Most of these guys started working in the fall, excuse me, in the summer. I saw the football team working out. I saw our coaches there early trying to help kids. I saw our track runners running all over the place as I became the superintendent. Our soccer team was there as well. What I love about this is the fact that you see collectively a group of kids coming together with a coach and a mentor to achieve a goal. And we're so proud when our students get that opportunity, not only to achieve that goal, but to show the excellence you saw here tonight. So I'm super proud of that. I'm super proud of our leadership. Thank you to Carol Rossetto for leading our department. Our athletic department gets bigger with more awards every year. But I will tell you, the thing that I am most proud of is the fact that we are recognized as Scholar-Athletes again. That, to me, means that our kids are doing it in the classroom, they're doing it on the fields, and most importantly, they're doing it together. And to me, that is about community. I loved, I went to every single one of these sports, not all of their games and matches, but I went to every single one. I didn't see too much with track, I got to be honest. I saw them at the beginning, I saw them at the end. That was it. But I watched the kids, they're excited, the community's excited, whether it was a soccer game, a football game, you name it, a swimming meet, the community's excited. We're glad to be back, going to athletic events and celebrating the accomplishments and hard work of our kids. So thank you very much, Ms. Rossetto, and to all of our athletes and coaches. Thank you very much for being here, guys. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the mic to any students that are in attendance that would like to address the board. Okay. Okay, Mr. Gavin, at this time, we're going to have our public hearing regarding senior citizen and persons with disabilities and limited income exemptions.
I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Bartels. Mr. Bartels, can you walk the board and the community through this?
Sure. Thank you. So recently, Nassau County Executive Bruce Blakeman signed a local law to increase the maximum allowable income requirement from $39,399 to $58,399 for taxpayers to qualify for a low-income senior citizen and person with disability exemption. In order to participate, local jurisdictions must formally opt into the program. Nassau County and most Nassau towns have already opted in. We are holding this public hearing to determine if the Rockville Center schools will also opt in. The exemption works on a sliding scale. That is, the full exemption, which in this case is 50% of the assessed value, is assigned to any taxpayer under the bottom of a range. And then the exemption phases out in 5% intervals and ends at the top of the range. The range used to be, up until this year, from $25,000 to $37,399. The new range increases to $50,000 to $58,399. So right now, there's only 35 properties in Rockville Center enjoying the existing exemption. Thirty of them are already at the max. So only, so the other five properties would automatically move to the max since they're already under the $50,000. The problem we have is we don't know how many new properties would qualify under this. We tried to look at it, we tried to get information from the assessors' office, they can't give us any information. They won't know until people actually start filling out the forms, so it's kind of a backwards way of doing it. So you have to kind of put it in place to find out how many people are going to be eligible. Just trying to look at it as best we can. People with Senior Star exemptions, there are about 400 of them in Rockville Center, but that goes all the way up to $92,000. So it'll be well under that number, so somewhere between 35 and the 400. If the amount were to double, that would shift about $180,000 in taxes across the entire district, which would equate to about $30 a homeowner. That would be twice as many people qualified. So that's about all the information I have on it. It's kind of up to us. There have been some surveys going around with different districts. Looks like a number of districts are opting in. There are some that are not. There are some that sound like they're going to wait until next year before they make a decision. But as I said, the county has opted in, the towns have opted in. We've already had a couple of phone calls about it, so now it's kind of up to us to decide. Any questions?
Any questions from board members? What's the next step?
The next step is we'll open it up for public comments if anybody has a comment about it. It's a public hearing about just this, this topic right now, and then we can vote on it later in the meeting.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the mic just for the public hearing portion regarding the senior citizen and persons with disabilities and limited income exemptions. Okay. Thank you. And it's an item for action later?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gavin, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. We have a very detailed report tonight. I'm happy to report to everyone that we have the results of our climate survey in, and we are going to have it put up on the screen. And there it is. That's good. Test. All right, good. I want to thank the Board of Education and everyone for their participation in our climate survey. I am pleased to report our results here tonight, and we're going to go through them slowly and methodically to try to tease out some of the understandings we can have as a board and as a community about the perceptions of our stakeholders for this school. So for our school quality analysis, we contracted with a company called K-12 Insight as a nationwide survey company. I've done this survey in my previous district for about 12 years. It is somewhat different this year, but I'm very familiar with the instrument and very familiar with how to use that instrument to further positive school change. So one of the things that they look at is they ask the public, our parents, our secondary students, our teachers and faculty, and this year, for the first time, our elementary students in grades three and up. So we have four different cohorts this year, and I have to tell you, we had the voices of nearly 4,000 people involved in this survey. So just so you have some details, we opened the survey from October 10th through November 1st. All of our parents received a unique email with the survey in there as an invitation to open it. We also published the link on the website, so not only do we have people fill it out through, from parents from the email, but we also had parents fill it out. as best we can. People with senior star exemptions, there are about 400 of them in Rockville Center, but that goes all the way up to $92,000. So it'll be well under that number, so somewhere between 35 and the 400. If the amount were to double, that would shift about $180,000 in taxes across the entire district, which would equate to about $30 a homeowner. That would be twice as many people qualified. So that's about all the information I have on it. It's kind of up to us. There have been some surveys going around with different districts. Looks like a number of districts are opting in. There are some that are not. There are some that sound like they're going to wait until next year before they make a decision. But as I said, the county has opted in, the towns have opted in. We've already had a couple of phone calls about it. So now it's kind of up to us to decide. Any questions?
Any questions from board members? What's the next step?
The next step is we'll open it up for public comments if anybody has a comment about it. It's a public hearing about just this, this topic right now. And then we can vote on it later in the meeting.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the mic just for the public hearing portion regarding the senior citizen and persons with disabilities and limited income exemptions. Okay, thank you. And it's an item for action later?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gavin, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam President. We have a very detailed report tonight. I'm happy to report to everyone that we have the results of our climate survey in. And we are going to have it put up on the screen, and there it is. That's good. Test, alright, good. I want to thank the Board of Education and everyone for their participation in our climate survey. I am pleased to report our results here tonight. And we're going to go through them slowly and methodically to try to tease out some of the understandings we can have as a board and as a community about the perceptions of our stakeholders for this school. So for our school quality analysis, we contracted with a company called K-12 Insight as a nationwide survey company. I've done this survey in my previous district for about 12 years. It is somewhat different this year, but I'm very familiar with the instrument and very familiar with how to use that instrument to further positive school change. So one of the things that they look at is they ask the public, our parents, our secondary students, our teachers and faculty, and this year, for the first time, our elementary students in grades three and up. So we have four different cohorts this year, and I have to tell you, we had the voices of nearly 4,000 people involved in this survey. So just so you have some details, we opened the survey from October 10th through November 1st. All of our parents received a unique email with the survey in there as an invitation to open it. We also published the link on the website. So not only do we have people fill it out from the parents from the email, but we also had parents fill it out as well after clicking on the links on the website. And we also asked our principals as well to hand out a QR code at arrival some of those days so that people can also get right there and get on their phone and get their survey. We sent reminders to all of our users that we want on October 17th, 20th, 25th, and 28th, parents who had students at more than one campus. So for example, if I had a student at the middle school and at the high school, I got to fill out two surveys. So we just wanted to make sure that we heard voices and experience that are unique to the schools as well. We had our parent guardian survey translated into Spanish. And we had a much more captive audience with our students, and we had a very high participation rate from our students. We asked them to fill it out. At the high school, it was during English class. Kids got the opportunity to fill it out during their English class over a course of several days. At the middle school, I believe it was also the English class, and the elementaries all did it in a different way. But you'll see our participation rates were very high. So why did we do a survey in the first place? Well, as your new superintendent, I came, when coming in, I wanted to understand what the community felt about our school district. It was really important to me. I wanted to know where we are right now so we can craft a vision for going forward. So part of this was very intentional. So we started this summer with a board retreat where we talked about what are our goals? How should we go about trying to implement positive systems in our district? And we set that together with the Board of Education, worked with the principals and the teachers to implement those goals. We started with those goal presentations early on in the year, September and October. Then we went into our data presentations. So not only do we want to have goals, and not only do we want to hear from the voices of all of our stakeholders, we want to know how our kids are doing. So we looked, we had an elementary data presentation from all of our principals. We then went to our middle school data presentation with our principals and assistant principals. And then we also had a high school data presentation, how are the kids performing? This was all done with the purpose to understand how we are, like what we feel about our district right now. The last component to try to establish where we are right now is the survey, the stakeholder survey. We wanted to hear from our parents, what do you think about our schools? How are we doing? We wanted to hear from our teachers, what do you think about our schools? How are we doing? And most importantly to me, we wanted to hear from the kids. We wanted to hear student voices about what they feel about the school system that they spend six to 12 hours in every day. So it was really important to me to hear their voices as well. As we go through the data, I wanted to just provide everyone with kind of a frame for how you can analyze some of these things. So the data will present to us some instructional challenges. What are the things we need to do differently in the classroom? Some of those things can be done right now, some of those things can be done after professional development, but those are instructional changes. So that's one kind of basket that you get back some information on. The second basket is programmatic. Based on this data, do we need to think differently about the programs, the academic programs, the extracurricular programs that we're going to offer? So an example of this might be, I do a survey and it comes back that we don't have full-day co-teaching, and that would be something that would be really popular for the parents and the teachers. That would be a programmatic change. We didn't use the survey for that, for that particular thing. We already have that put in for this year, but that would be a programmatic change. And the last one is a cultural challenge. So what I mean by that is, what are our kids and parents' perceptions about how invited they are in the building? Do they feel safe? Do they feel like they're invited? Do parents feel like they have the opportunity for feedback? Do students and parents feel, how do they feel we handle disagreements, bullying, things like that? And if we do have some bullying, what is that based on? So those are the three kind of buckets that we have. Each one of them requires that when we identify challenges or areas of improvement, they probably require a different way of attacking it. So for example, we'll get to something in a little bit where it might be, the kids are telling us, for example, teachers don't tell us why I need to learn this. They don't connect it to real life. That's a finding in our survey, we're going to talk about it. But that's an instructional change that can happen like that. Okay, that can happen very quickly. Some of the cultural changes might take a little bit longer, and we'll talk about that in a second. So general trends, this is not for our results. This is thing, these are things that I've found over time, 10 years giving this survey. So again, these are not our results, but these are general trends of things that we find. Number one, faculty responses are generally more positive than parents and students. There's a couple of reasons for that. First, our, our parents are not always in all the buildings and may not know everything about what they're being asked. So that's generally speaking. Our students may only have a narrow view or their view of a particular thing. We would hope that our teachers have a more global view of, and be the most informed of our stakeholders about how schools actually respond. Generally speaking, that's why they tend to be more positive. Number two, student and parent responses are generally influenced by their interaction with teachers and with administrators. So if little Johnny was referred to the principal's office and got suspended, he may not have a positive look when asked about the principal. If a parent has a parent-teacher conference and it doesn't go well, and we feel like the parent, the teacher wasn't able to answer a question or doesn't know my child, that may also contribute to it. The good news is, is that we are a people organization, and the number one factor driving us is our interactions with other people. It's something we should talk about. It's something that's within our control to fix quite quickly. The last thing, and this comes from, again, 10 years of doing this survey, discipline is always an area where there is a difference in stakeholder perspective. You will see lower areas of agreement in discipline. For 10 years I did this survey in my previous district, every year it was lower. That doesn't mean that discipline is not happening. It doesn't mean that discipline is done wrong. It just, that means that generally speaking, most people don't know if there's a discipline incident, how it's handled because it's confidential. That includes the teachers. So a teacher refers a child to the office, they may not know what was the end result. Because again, that consequence is confidential. So there, I want to keep everyone, everyone to keep that in mind as we go through the data tonight. So who responded? Well, we had just shy of 4,000 overall responses. 1,300 parents, about 400 campus-based staff. In-campus-based staff, that includes predominantly faculty. It also includes teacher aides that filled it out and some building-based clerical and administrators. We had 15, almost 1,600 secondary students at the middle school and high school fill this out. And another 652 elementary students fill out this survey. Again, close to 4,000 voices heard in the survey. All of these response rates are pretty good. They're not perfect, but they are pretty good. And they do give us what I would say is a representative sample of each one of those stakeholder groups. So the first question they ask, and the first thing I want to start off with, how do you rate the overall quality of the education at your child's school? So what do our parents think? What do our sta, what does our staff think? What do our secondary students think? And what do our elementary students think? The green bars represent those that rated their experience as excellent. The blue portion are those that represented it as, their experience as good. That was their perception. The gold or, you know, really brown bars that you see up there, those are, those that represented their experience as, as fair. And the very small or nonexistent red bar would be those that represented their experience as poor. These numbers, when you add together the good and excellent, those are the numbers all the way on the right. So parents and guardians, they, parents and guardians, they rated our schools overall at 89% good or excellent, with 42% of that cohort saying that we are excellent. Our campus-based staff, higher, 95% of our campus-based staff said we are good or excellent, with a stronger proportion of excellent. Secondary students, 85% of our secondary students said we are good or excellent. And our elementary students came in at 92%, good or excellent. Now to put this into context, this is a wide positive base of support. I would not, I would want to see the excellent numbers tick up. I'm going to tell you that right now. So there is area for improvement, but there's a wide base of support. Our parents, our teachers, and our children generally feel, this is not for every individual, but generally feel very positive about their school district experience, whether they're a parent or a student. So what does this mean? Nine out of 10 of those surveyed, when you add everyone all together, have the perception that RVC is a good or an excellent district. 45% of our stakeholders, when you add everyone all in together, believe that we are an excellent district. And again, we have a strong base of support with room to grow. I will tell you, in 10 years of doing this at my previous district, one of the things that I told the board was that we never got to that level of good and excellent in terms of the support all the way through. But we did have a higher level of, of number of people that rated us as excellent. So our base is very wide, and now there's room to grow, if that makes sense to everyone. The survey is based and broken up into several dimensions. Academic support, those are things like, is my work challenging? Does my teacher help me? Or am I supported? Student support, does that mean we have programs to support students' individual needs? You'll see things in there. We'll break these out a little bit later. School leadership is exactly what it sounds like. Talks about the administration in general. Family involvement, how involved the families feel in their elementary, in their middle school, and high school? Are there opportunities for feedback? And then safety and behavior, does your child feel safe? Does everyone feel like they knew all of their safety routines and some other pieces in there? Their bullying, and that's where our discipline exists as well. So if you look, the green bar, for, these are aggregate for all of the different questions for each of the dimensions. The way this is phrased is that you are asked, do you agree or strongly agree with a statement? So for example, I agree, strongly agree, or disagree, or strongly disagree with a statement. So you had four ranges of choice. The top bar are parents and guardians. So parents, generally speaking, in academic support, they feel very positive that we have three out of four, about 75% of our parents feel that we have good academic support here in Rockville Center. Our teachers are more positive at 86%. And our secondary students, coming close to the parents, about three out of four, 75%, feel that we have strong academic support. They strongly agree or agree. Student support for our parents is about 74%. Again, about three out of four people feel we have a strong level of student support. 93% of our, our teachers feel that we have strong student support. And 79% of our, our students feel that we have strong student support. School leadership, 79% of our, of our, in aggregate of all the questions, 79% of our parents believe, excuse me, agree or strongly agree that we have a positive perception of school leadership. 90% of our teachers believe that we have a strong perception of school leadership. 68% of our students, you see a little bit of drop-off there on school leadership from the secondary students. I also want to make clear to everyone, these bars do not represent the elementary students lumped into this. The elementary students, this was new, so I will break out the elementary separately as we go through. Last thing, excuse me, family involvement, 75% of our parents and guardians, three out of every four people feel positively about family involvement. 81% of our faculty and 69% of our students. And safety and behavior, 69% of our, our parents feel positively about the safety and behavior. In aggregate, 88% of our teachers and 74% of our secondary students. So let's go into each one of these dimensions and talk about some of the individual things that were added up to come up with these aggregate scores. A few things in terms of an executive summary. Number one, there are perception gaps. Meaning that our stakeholders have differences of opinion about several key areas in our school district. Differences of opinion mean, could be a 3% gap, it could mean a 15% gap, it could mean a 30% gap, but there are perception differences. One of the big perception difference gaps that we have between parents and guardians, students and campus staff have to do with student academic support and preparation. For example, 83% of our campus-based staff agree or strongly agree that teachers successfully show how lessons relate to life outside of school. So the teachers feel that we are trying to connect what kids learn at school to life outside with eight, basically eight out of 10. Our secondary students, that number drops to 41%. So there's a perception gap there. That means we have to be more explicit in how we're connecting what students are learning every day to things out, to life outside in school. Our parents also drop off with 53%. Another perception gap, 86% of our campus-based staff agree or strongly agree students receive the support they need to prepare them for the next grade. That drops off a little bit to 70% of parents, and it drops off a little bit to 68% of secondary students. Another one of our perception gaps, 91% of our campus-based staff agree or strongly agree students receive the support they need to address their individual needs. This drops off when you ask the parents and you ask the secondary students. Drops off to 68 and 63% respectively. So there are perception gaps. That doesn't necessarily mean there, there are tremendous problems. It just means that there are, the way these individual items were perceived, there are differences. One thing where we do have a high level of agreement is that 85% of their secondary students agree or strongly agree that the teachers set high expectations. 89% of elementary students also agree that their teachers helped them do their best. So our students believe that our teachers want the best out of them when they're doing their work. This gets more interesting as we go. Perception gaps also exist within safety and behavior as it pertains to discipline and bullying. For example, 68% of our campus-based staff agreed or strongly agreed that discipline is enforced fairly, 68. Whereas 50% of parents agreed that it was strongly enforced fairly, and 56% of secondary students. We'll dive deeper into that in a little bit, and that's going to, we're going to talk a little bit about that in the next steps. So let's look at academic support. So when we talked about the overall level of academic support, these were the questions that were asked that make up that particular dimension. I want to focus in on the three on the bottom where there seems, where the stars are. So things that I thought were interesting. You could see, you could see for the first star, teachers give timely feedback about student work. Our parents think they do, eight out of 10. Our teachers think they do, almost nine out of 10, 86%. But it drops off, there's a perception gap for our students. So our students are telling us, I'd like a little bit more feedback in a more timely fashion. Teachers, the next one down says, give helpful feedback. So it's two different types of feedback. One is, do we give it on time? And number two, does it help? One of the gaps we have here is that our, our parents think it's about, you know, excuse me, three out of four people think we give helpful feedback. 90% of our, our teachers think we give helpful feedback, and three out of four. This is not a large perception gap, but it is a perception gap. I'd be more concerned if this was less than, you know, 60 or 65%. One, I talked to you already, this is probably the largest perception gap that we have in terms of academic support. What the question was, do teachers successfully show students how lessons relate to life outside of school? 83% of our teachers agree or strongly disagree, strongly agree. Our parents, though, drops to 53%, and our secondary students are dropped to 41%. So one thing is clear from this is that we have an instructional issue that we have to look at. We have to look at and be more explicit about how things that kids are learning connect to life outside. The survey's telling us that. The kids are telling us that, the parents are telling us that. It's a conversation that the principals will be having with all of the teachers in faculty meetings to come. Interestingly, one of the things we asked all of our, our stakeholders was, does this school offer a variety of academic courses? The students at 81% are telling us, yes, it does. It drops off a little bit to parents, down to 72%, and our teachers even, at 73%. I believe there's room to grow for the different types of academic courses we can offer and the opportunities for our kids. It's not a wide disagreement, but it is an area for us to grow. You guys with me so far? I'm going to put you all to sleep. No? I want to talk a little bit about our elementary. This is our first time with this, and I will tell you, the elementary responses were amazing. So my teacher expects me to do my very best. The answer was, instead of agree or strongly agree, they were asked, yes, sometimes, no. So you can say yes, or sometimes, or no. I will tell you, our elementary teachers make sure that the kids know that we want them to do their very best all the time. That is an extraordinarily high number when 89% of our elementary students come out and say, my teacher wants me to do the best they possibly can. The 11% said sometimes, and that's the whole, the whole lot of them, and I took it. Nobody's saying, nope, my teacher doesn't expect me to do my best. They're going through the motions. So that's good from our elementary point of view. This to me was, the next one was probably the most interesting thing. We asked the elementary students, my homework challenges me to think. Yes? Yes? Sometimes, no. Thirty-nine percent, I thought this was low for us. We need to work on this. Thirty-nine percent of our students feel that they are challenged regularly. Some of the kids like, yeah, sometimes it's hard, sometimes it's easy, I got it. So this is an area where we have to look at on the elementary level. What are we doing here? How are we challenging our students appropriately? And that level of challenge, recognizing that that level of challenge may be different for each child. So that's really important here, that it's not just, we just make everything harder and expect this number to grow, to go up. That's not good for kids. What is good for kids is we have a conversation with the teachers, realize that we have different, different uh levels of challenge in each one of our students and we gear our instruction appropriately. And even our elementary students, only half of our elementary students say positively, yes, that their teacher gives real-life examples for the things they learn. So I know many of you sat in class and said, raised your hand, probably, maybe you didn't raise your hand because you guys were good in school. But I raised my hand and said, why do I need to know this? We should have an answer for that before they ask the question. And that's one of the things we have to talk about as a staff, as a faculty, as a learning organization. Next area is student support. We added two different questions. This, these are questions for ourselves. We wanted to know, do you make, uh, do you make available the, excuse me, do you utilize the support programs we have already in place? So we asked, does your child or do you, meaning like you could, this is an amalgamation with the secondary students as well. Do you attend an after-school or before-school academic support program? About three out of, three out of every ten, about thirty-five percent of our kids um and our parents, they pretty much agree. So the kids kind of know they're going. Some of them don't, right? There's a little bit disagreement there. Um, going to academic support classes, um, and then about sixty-five percent of our parents say no. Six percent of our kids don't know if they're going to after-school or before, so that's something we need to have a conversation about. Um, but I thought that was very interesting. So before after-school program. So as we talk about school supports, we wanted to know, do you make use of the supports we offer? The second question we asked was, do parents seek out their own supports? Meaning, do you go get a tutor? Now, there's a wide variety of reasons about why someone might get a tutor. I might get a tutor if my stu, my child is struggling with geometry. They have like a sixty-five average. I want to get a tutor so that their grades come up. You also may have parents out there whose child has a ninety-nine and they get a tutor to make sure that they get a hundred. So there are different reasons why we get tutors, but we were very curious about why, what, how many of our parents were seeking supports outside of the school district? So you can see, this is again, is a perception gap, which I think is very interesting. Twenty-eight percent of our parents say, oh yes, we get tutors. But seventeen percent of our kids say, oh yes, I take tutors. Part of that could be, they may not want to admit they're getting a tutor. I don't think it's because they don't know if they're having a tutor. But there is a perception gap there. Four percent of our kids don't know if they're getting a tutor or not. Those would be the ones that were answered honestly, I'm not sure. Student support, these were the different areas in the dimension of student support. So this to me was very important. There was a high degree of alignment on the top uh item, which is starred first. There is a teacher, counselor or staff member to whom a student can go for help with a school problem. Ninety-eight percent of our teachers agreed with that statement or strongly agreed. Matched very closely by ninety-one percent of our students and eighty-nine percent of our parents. By and large, our children believe there's someone they can go to when they have an issue with a school problem. I can go to a teacher, I can go to a guidance counselor, I can go to the principal, whatever that might be. Those are strong numbers and in my experience in my previous district, those are higher than I've seen in my previous ten years. The number drops off a little bit when you change the question. Is it a school problem or a personal problem? You can see a high school student who may be having a disagreement with a boyfriend or a girlfriend may not want to go to their English teacher with a personal problem. But there is a drop in perception. The teachers believe, yes, we are there for our kids if they have personal problems. And I can tell you that kids bring personal problems to teachers and to administrators and guidance counselors. There's a little bit more of a hesitation where three out of a four of our parents and three out of four of our kids agree that they would do that. So that's a drop off. I do want you to know that's a little bit more typical. Sometimes personal problems are personal problems. They may not necessarily always feel comfortable going to um a school-based counselor. That is a strong number, but there's still a gap in perception as communication and work that we can do in that area. This I thought was very interesting, the second starred uh item. Students receive the support they need to prepare for the next grade level or life after high school. Eighty-six percent of our teachers agree or strongly agree with that statement. That number drops a little bit, but it is pretty close between the parents and secondary students around seventy, sixty-eight percent. So there's some more communication work there to be done. This one was also, I think, a very stark disagreement in terms of our stakeholders. And I think this can be taken in a number of different ways and it's gonna take some further conversations to tease out exactly what this means. Students in this school receive support that addresses their individual needs. That could be, I'm bored in school and I want more challenging work. That could be, I don't feel supported in an individual way. Or it could also mean, I'd really like to take a photography class and I don't have room in my schedule. Because I can't pursue an individual interest. So there's a lot of things to tease out from a student point of view. There's a lot of things to tease out from a parent point of view. But there is a perception gap here. Last one, this school offers students a variety of extracurricular activities. Our parents, three out of four people are very satisfied with the number of extracurricular, which means that one out of every four people would like to see some more, some difference. I have a strong feeling that the ones that disagreed would be parents on the elementary level, not necessarily the secondary level. The reason I would say that is typically speaking at the elementary level, we have less clubs. Right? We just have less clubs. They don't have after-school sports um that are related to the school. They have after-school sports that, you know, club soccer, you name it. But I do feel that that's probably where that's coming from. Our secondary kids feel that we have plenty. Ninety percent of our kids say, yeah, we have plenty of after-school activities and extracurricular activities. We asked the elementary students, again, the elementaries came back very supportive. I can talk to an adult in school if I have a school problem. Eighty-six percent of the kids agreed with that statement. That's a really solid number. A really solid number. I can talk to an adult if I have a personal problem. Like the secondary students, when it's a personal problem, the kids change their minds a little bit. But you could see too, when you add in the sometimes, that's still a high number of agreement there. Still a high number of agreement. I can talk to an adult if I have a technology problem. If they break something, they go find an adult to try to fix it. So that, I'm pretty confident that they'll do. School leadership. School leadership, again, these are the three, um, our secondary students, parents and teachers. The principal and assistant principal make decisions that are in the best interest of kids. We have a perception gap. Our teachers, again, presumably the most informed of our, of our um respondents. Nine out of ten people say absolutely, they're making uh decisions in the best interest of all kids. That drops a little bit to parents, so about seventy-eight percent. But our secondary students have a different opinion, about fifty-seven percent. Again, that could be because they don't go to the principal and don't know. That could be that somebody got in trouble and didn't like the outcome. That could be, I tried to start a new club and I was told no. Whatever, whatever that might be, there's a lot of no in there, I would imagine, from the secondary school level. So let's tease that out a little bit. What does that really mean? So then we asked parents, did you actually go to the principal? We asked our stakeholders, have you actually talked to the principal? So that number at fifty-seven percent from kids, I was a little bit concerned when I saw that until I saw how many kids actually said, yes, I went and talked to the principal. That number drops precipitously. So this past school year, have you reached out to the principal or assistant principal with a need or concern? Parents, thirty-five percent. So about three, three, thirty, thirty-five percent of our parents reach out to a principal with a need or a concern. Teachers, you would expect they would reach out to um principals for a need or concern. That's part of what they do, it's part of their job. Sixty-eight percent. Only eleven percent of our secondary kids felt that they went to the principal with a need or a concern. So what does that actually mean? When they reached out, this is the key thing here. When they reached out to the principal or the assistant principal, how were they treated and what was the result? That was the next question. So if you made the effort and you went down to the principal, what happened? Were we responsive? That is a very high number of agreement. So our principals were very responsive. All three stakeholder groups say, I met with the principal, I went in, I talked to him or her and they were responsive to whatever I was asking. Parents, teachers and students all said the same thing. The principal and assistant principal were courteous, where you treat it with respect. Drops a little bit when you talk to the kids, eight out of ten. But our parents and teachers feel a high level, that almost an impeccable level, that we were courteous in our response. And then finally, were they helpful? Right? Were they helpful? If you brought a concern, were our principals helpful? Eighty-three percent of our parents said, yes, when I went to the principal, had a conversation, brought a concern, they were helpful. Ninety percent of our teachers and seventy-seven percent of our kids. So I'm a little bit less worried when I saw this data, that our secondary students were worried about how we make our decisions in the best interest of kids. Because when they took the time to go and meet with a principal or an administrator, we were courteous, we were helpful and we tried to get something done. Doesn't always mean we gave them what they wanted, but all of those things are important in terms of trying to make sure we have a positive school climate. Family involvement. This is about how do we communicate with our families? What are the opportunities for our families to communicate with us? So I want to turn our attention down to the two starred items at the bottom. This school provides opportunities for families to provide input on how to improve the school environment or experience. Sixty-one percent of our parents strongly agreed or agreed with that statement. Seventy-two percent of our teachers. Fifty-nine percent of our kids, secondary kids. This is an area where we can grow. I will say, this is also an opportunity for parents to comment, to improve on the school experience. Did we provide an opportunity? They're telling us that we haven't provided a lot of them, but this is one of them. This is a good step. The survey is a good step to listening to our stakeholders. Second question that starred. The school values and uses input provided by families to improve school environment and school experience. Our teachers, three out of every four are basically agreeing with that statement. But it drops to fifty-four percent of our parents and fifty-six percent of our ele, uh secondary students. That's an important piece to have. One of the things we've done this year is attended a lot of meetings, talked with PTA, talked with different parent groups, gone to SEP, so that we can have the opportunity to hear feedback. The reason we did the survey in the first place was to provide parents with the opportunity to provide feedback. It was important for our kids to provide us feedback. It was important for our students, our parents and our teachers to provide feedback. The community is kind of telling us, we want some more opportunities. So I think that's an important piece to have in our heads as we go forward. We also asked the elementary slightly different questions. This was more about, you know, what's the conversation like at the dinner table? Does my family talk about things that are going on in school? Sixty-nine percent of our parent, our kids said, yep, they do. Twenty-eight percent said, yeah, sometimes they talk. Uh, not too many people said no. And we also had fifty-six of our, percent of our kids said that our parents go to the school events with another forty-one percent. So from the elementary and secondary level, there is a, a parent, there is a perception from the kids that the parents are involved. We with everyone so far? We're good? Not boring you yet? Okay, good. Safety and behavior. Again, this has to do with climate and culture. This school is safe. The first starred item that we'll talk about tonight, this school is safe. Eighty-six percent of their parents strongly agree to agree with that statement. Ninety-one percent of our teachers and eighty-two percent of our students. This was the most important thing for me to read. Do our kids feel safe when they come to school? Do our parents trust us that their kids are safe when they come to school and how does our, how do our teachers feel about that? That is a high number, higher than I've seen in my previous experience and a pretty strong level of agreement. So I was really happy to see that there's a perception and I do believe that it's accurate, that our students are safe in school and that we're trying to do right with them, by them and make sure that they're safe going forward. This one was, I told you at the beginning, discipline always drops, always drops. Discipline is enforced fairly for all students. You can see that the percentage of agreement in all of our stakeholders drops off of what is typical. We usually have about seventy-four, seventy-five percent. It drops down to fifty percent for parents, sixty-eight percent for teachers and fifty-six percent for students. Again, there's a wide bit of information and way to, to interpret this data. So what does that really mean? That could mean that kids don't know. There is the option on this question for parents to say, I don't know. My kid doesn't go to the principal. I have no idea if there's been any discipline. So there is a piece of that baked in. But we would still want the perception to be that discipline is enforced fairly, even if your child doesn't go to the principal. So there's a communication thing that we have to work on there. And we have to work with our students about why we do what we do if there's a disciplinary issue. Those are really important. Again, though, the challenge with this, and this was, these are numbers similar to the things that I've seen in my previous district. Most of the reasons that you see this is because sometimes when there's a disciplinary incident, we don't tell everyone what's going on. If little Johnny just got suspended for something, we don't tell little Bobby's mom that little Johnny got suspended. So there might be a level of frustration because there's a confidentiality piece. So just keep that in the back of your mind with those numbers. This was also interesting. We talked specifically about bullying. Staff members are responsive. Parents, forty-nine percent. Teachers, ninety-three percent. Students, sixty-seven percent. There's a perception gap that we have to work on. Period, end of story. We have to work on it. Bullying is not tolerated. Ninety-five percent of our parents believe, uh, excuse me, our teachers believe that it is not tolerated. Eighty percent of our students, which is high, believe that it's not tolerated, but only sixty-six percent of our, our parents believe. That is a perception gap that we need to work on. This was an interesting question. Students in this school are treated fairly regardless of their race, culture, religion, sexual orientation, gender, gender expression, political affiliation, physical appearance or disability. Three out of every four people of our parents believe that that's accurate. Three out of every four people of our secondary students believe that that's accurate. Ninety-one percent of our uh teachers believe that that's accurate. But we dug deeper. We said, okay, if somebody said that you're not treated fairly, what's the rationale for it? Why do you believe that somebody wouldn't be treated fairly? This is something we have to talk about culturally. This is something that's gonna be long conversations that we have to, we have to work on it in terms of communication. If you answer this question, so seventy-seven, this isn't thirteen hundred parents answering this question, this is seventy-seven parents. I want you to look at the bottom where it says N equals seventy-seven. So again, it's not everyone, it's only those that answer this question. Twenty-one teachers answered this question, but two-hundred-and-sixty secondary students answered this question. So all of these numbers are built in. What is the major reason that you feel somebody would not be treated fairly in this school? For teachers, the teachers believe ninety-five percent race would be one of the issues. Sixty-one of, percent of our T, our parents believe that. Sixty-seven percent of those, again, that answered, believe that as well. Now, I will tell you that the numbers look a little skewed because you didn't just pick one, you were allowed to pick multiple. So for example, if I felt that there was somebody that um wasn't treated fairly, I could pick religion, sexual orientation and gender all at the same time. So the numbers are not gonna add up percentage-wise. Does that make sense to everyone? But you can see, for our kids, sexual orientation, race and ethnicity, physical appearance, disability, gender are all reasons that the kids would pick for reasons that kids might not be treated fairly in school. And that could be either by a staff member or another student. So this is something we have to have a conversation about. This is not a shocking number, but it is a number that causes concern. It's something that we have to have a conversation about with our principals. We have to talk about it with our faculty, guidance counselors, social workers and think about systemic ways to address it. And I think mostly, we need to have some conversations with our kids further. So I'll turn a little bit now. What were the things that ranked the highest with the most agreement? What were the things that ranked the lowest for each of our stakeholder groups? So for parents and guardians, highest, our highest indicators, they believe that we treat each other with respect. We, they believe that there's someone their student can go to, we're welcoming, our school is safe and our staff members treat students with respect. All over eighty-five percent. Really strong, strong responses, a positive perception of our school building. What are the um highest numbers of disagreement? Again, interesting. The school, this is again for parents, this school provides opportunities for family to provide input. Twenty-eight percent of people disagree with that. That does mean, right, that the majority do agree with it, but twenty-eight percent, that's a high number of twenty-eight percent that disagree. The students in this school receive support that addresses their individual needs. One out of every four of our parents are saying, I don't agree with that. So that's something we have to have a conversation about. The school uses and values inputs from families, twenty-two percent. Students are academically challenged by their schoolwork. Twenty percent of our parents disagreed with that. So one out of every five may not agree with that statement. And then finally, for our parents, twenty percent of our parents want to see some more extracurricular activities. Again, it's my guess, that's mostly elementary. Staff. The staff believes almost at a hundred percent that there's a teacher that a student can go to for both a personal and a school problem, that staff members treat students with respect, that bullying is not tolerated, and that school offers students a variety of extracurricular activities. The highest number of agreement, or the highest percentage of disagreement, excuse me, from our teachers, discipline is enforced fairly. Twenty-four percent disagreed. Students treat staff members with respect, twenty percent. The school offers a variety of academic courses. Twenty percent disagreed with that, one out of every five. All students are aware of safety and security procedures, nine percent that drops a little bit, and then the school promotes opportunities for families to volunteer. Our, our nine percent of our staff disagree with that. So those are our highest numbers of disagreement, or percentage of disagreement for our fa, for our faculty and staff. For our secondary students, for agreement, they agree there is someone they can go to for a school problem, ninety-one percent. Ninety percent for a technology problem. Ninety percent say we're offering a ton of extracurricular activities. Eighty-nine percent say we're aware, that the school staff members are aware of the safety and security. And eighty-five percent say stu, uh, teachers set high expectations for kids. Those are all really high numbers on each of those indicators. Where they disagree, you guys have heard this before, they disagree fifty-three percent with saying how student, where teachers show how lessons relate to life outside school. Discipline is enforced fairly for all students. They disagree with the principal and assistant principal make decisions that are in the best interest of kids. But I did tell you that when you dive deep and find out that if they actually spoke to the principal, that number drops up. Um, and students in this school receive support that addresses their individual needs, thirty percent disagree. And then the principal and assistant principal clearly communicate the school's goals for the upcoming school year, thirty percent. So those for our kids are areas of disagreement. For our elementary students, I will tell you this. If we give them more recess, they will be very, very happy. Um, that was made abundantly clear, uh, in many, many messages that please give us more recess. Also, they would like a spicy chicken patty. Um, but I understand that my, my school's safety drills and security drills, ninety-six percent of our elementary kids know what they're supposed to do in a safety situation. That is impressive. My teachers expect me to do my very best, eighty-nine percent. That is impressive. Adults in my, in this school treat students with respect, eighty-nine percent. Very impressive. I feel safe in my school. Again, for me, this was a really big piece. Our elementary students are safe in school. I can talk to an adult if I have a technology problem, eighty-eight percent. Where is the level of disagreement? I can talk to an adult if I have a personal problem. About nine percent of our kids are unsure whether or not they would go to a school adult with a personal problem. My teachers give real-life examples in class. Again, that mirrors what they see at the secondary level. And five percent of our kids are not sure if kids face consequences if they bully someone at school. So those are our levels of disagreement. Again, those are small in terms of disagreement, but it is the highest percentage that we found in terms of total disagreement for our elementary kids. Net promoter score. This is new. I haven't seen this, this piece before, so I'm not as familiar with this type of analysis, but it is very interesting to me. So they ask, if you had a family or friend moving to Rockville Center, or excuse me, for this particular school, would you recommend, somebody moves in next year, would you recommend the school? Okay? For parents and guardians, you had a choice to, for everyone, you had a choice to rate our school district from ten down to zero. So this number says that if you give a nine or a ten, you are a promoter. You're going to be somebody out there that's going to promote the school district. You're a promoter. If you give a seven or an eight, you're like, okay, yeah, it's pretty good, right? It's pretty good. A six to a zero would be someone that's not a promoter. So this is a new metric for us. You could see that our parents, by and large, uh, forty-seven percent and twenty-eight percent are either passives or promoters. Um, our secondary students, thirty percent of our secondary students are like, nah, I wouldn't go to this school. So that's something to talk about. Now, that could be because they don't want to go to school at all. That could be because, um, you know, they want to get, do away with school as a concept because they're middle school, there's middle school kids in here as well. But it is very interesting. Our staff, ninety percent of our staff said between seven and ten, that they would recommend that people come to this school. What was the driver on that response? So we then asked, well, why'd you give the score that you gave? Why'd you talk about this particular thing? Why'd you give that score? Academic support. Okay? You went through all the different dimensions that I talked about before. The two with the arrows. Okay, so for parents and guardians, school leadership and interactions with staff and teachers were the biggest drivers. It didn't matter if you gave him a ten, it didn't give, matter if you gave him a two. This is what I talked about before. We have a good deal of control about how we respond as human beings to other human beings. And that when you have a positive interaction with parents, as a staff member, as an administrator, and they, people feel like they were listened to, not always agreed with, but they felt like they were listened to and their concerns were heard, or my teacher knows my child as an individual. I get it, I feel comfortable with this teacher with my child. Those are all opportunities for us. Every single interaction is an opportunity for us to raise that net promoter score. Opportunities like tonight. Opportunity for us to raise that net promoter score. How do we talk with parents? What kind of opportunities do they get for feedback? All of those things are within our control. They didn't talk about buildings. They didn't talk about, um, safety and security for the most part. They basically talked about, how do we react? How do the individuals that work in the school district respond when I have a question, a need, or a concern? Campus-based staff, the reason for campus-based staff was the same thing. What was the reason for yours, your, your score? Teachers, interactions with students, with staff and teachers. So do our teachers feel part of a community? Do our teachers feel valued? Do they feel like when they go to the principal, that they, their concerns are heard? Do they feel like that a parent is listening to them the same way a teacher, you know, a parent would expect a teacher to listen? That's a reciprocal relationship, both of those things. For our secondary students, it was interactions with staff and teachers. So you could see a theme. We are a human organization about humans, and we need to have human interactions and increase, increase them. That would be it. This is the next question is, if you had a family member moving to the area, how likely are you, if you had a family member moving to basically Long Island, would you recommend the Rockville Center School District? It goes up a little bit, um, in terms of the net promoters, but it kind of goes through the same analysis again. About thirty percent of our, our secondary students would say, meh, maybe not Rockville Center. Um, but seventy percent would say, yes, move to Rockville Center. Or, yeah, you should probably move to Rockville Center. So these are all things and areas for us to work on. This is a communication. This is telling us that we need to work on our communication. This is telling us that we need to talk about the programs we have, why we have those programs, and why they're good for kids. That is a major component to your net promoter scores. And again, this was interesting. Options, there's no basis for these options other than these were ideas. So we don't have costs, we don't have prices, we don't have any of those things. I don't want anyone to think that I've voted for this, it's going to be in a bond some way or in the budget. That's not the case. I just wanted to find out from the community, what are you interested in in terms of facilities upgrades? I can tell you this. The highest percentage was for us to refurbish and upgrade the fab labs in the high school. So adding computers, adding computer-assisted design machines, those kinds of things, people were very interested in that. They were also interested in the idea of adding a gym onto the end of Wilson. And the reason they're interested in that is because I do believe Wilson parents came out quite in force for this. Um, they're very interested in that because Wilson is the only school where kids eat in their classrooms. And this would allow, if we built a gym, this would allow the kids to have a cafeteria because we'd turn the existing gym into a cafeteria. So I think that was important at Wilson for some of the parents. Go to the next one. Okay? The other questions we asked for our parents was about athletic facility upgrades. We talked about turf and refurbishing the track at the middle school. That was a high percentage. The other one that has a high percentage, I was wondering about this. Um, they want to air-condition the gym here. That is not cheap. I'm going to tell you that right now, it's not cheap. But one of my, the reasons I think people are interested in air conditioning this is because people have sat through, at the end of the year, red and blue and sweated. And so they were very interesting, interested in the idea of sitting in an air-conditioned Southside High School gym, um, with air conditioning. Also, we were, you know, our kids take exams in there, and our parents probably out in the back of their mind, that it would be nice when kids take exams that is air-conditioned as well. They are interested in the field, and they are interested in air conditioning. A little bit less interested in upgrading Barrish, which is our baseball field, working with the village to upgrade the, uh, Barrish baseball field, and they are not interested in a new turf field at Watson. So those are some of the ideas we had. The reason I asked again is so that we have some basis for planning. We're in the process, I, I, many of you may know this, but we're putting together a five-year capital plan. Like, how are we going to address needs? So it was important for Mr. Bartels and myself to hear from the community about what kind of things are we interested in, so we can put that into, or think about folding those kind of projects into our five-year capital plan. So that was the reason for asking it. I'm very excited about the ideas of maybe doing a couple of these things in the, in the next year. We'll talk about this in terms of budget presentation going forward. Um, but I really thank everyone for their responses. I thank everyone for their time. And I want to talk about takeaways. Again, the presentation tonight is the start of a conversation, it's not the end. Typically, so the audience and the television audience out there knows, this is given at the end of the year, most times. I gave it at the beginning of the year because I wanted to know what people thought right now. So it was important for me to hear from our community stakeholders about what they feel about our school. Number two. Our district enjoys a wide base of support from the community. Our teachers are here for kids. Our kids are here for great experiences, and our parents are supportive of both. Number three, as I talked about before, there are three main areas that we should be looking at. Number one, instructional. Three things that jumped out to myself and our administrative team was we need to do a better job to connect what students learn to real-world experiences. Kids need to know why they're doing something. When you know why, your level of engagement goes up and you see a purpose. We need to provide students with more opportunities for challenging work at the elementary level. Again, that level of challenge is should be differentiated, but kids need to feel challenged. Number three. Instructionally, we need to provide students with more feedback in a timely fashion. And it needs to make sense and help them to move forward. Feedback is the breakfast of champions. Literally. You can't grow unless you get feedback that stretches you. So that is a conversation. All three of those things that I just talked about are under that instructional basket. All three are things that the principals are working on. Programmatic. What, how does this impact us in the programs that we're going to recommend going forward? It is clear, looking at the data, that we need to provide more options for students to exercise choice and feel that their individual needs are supported. The kids are telling us this, the parents are telling us this, and a portion of the teachers are telling us this. Not everyone agrees, but there is a level and a portion of our, each one of those stakeholders that think this is really important. Cultural. We definitely need to dig deeper and examine student perceptions of bullying and faculty responses to accusations or incidences of it. So I want to do some work with the principals. I want to do some work with our guidance counselors and social workers to talk to kids about, do they really understand what bullying is? Because sometimes, maybe on the elementary level, if we disagree about something, they might say that's bullying because I didn't, I, he disagreed with me. So we want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing, that's first. Second, we want to make sure that kids feel that they're heard. Third, further examine further, uh, perceptions on the reasons for bullying. And our last takeaway is that we need to communicate, 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 and then when we're tired of communicating, do it again. Talk about the things we do here in Rockville Center. Talk, like, we celebrated our kids tonight. Athletes and, and performing artists. We celebrated them. We need to talk about that more. We need to get out there and have people come to concerts. Some of our, some of our people that may not have a kid in a concert, they need to come. Um, we're in the middle right now of concert season. I've now gone to four, we have five left to go. Those are celebrations of kids working together to achieve a common goal. That is worth our time to come out and celebrate. So not only do the kids need to know their why, we need to know our why as an organization, as a group. Why do we do what we do? And our why should always be our students. Next steps for the board to consider. Um, we've already discussed as a board that we're going to have a board retreat with Central Office to identify areas for goals out of this survey for next year. So again, this is the start, not the finish. So we're going to meet together, we're going to meet together collaboratively, and talk about further as a group, what does this mean for our goals for next year? What does this mean for the steps we want to take, the systems we want to implement? What does it mean? Our principals are going to share this information with teachers and develop action, action steps for the things not only that we can do right now, but the things that we need to do and we need time to develop. I'm going to offer, now that we've done this presentation publicly, I'm going to offer all of our teachers the opportunities at different schools to talk about the data so that they hear it from me. That this is not to be used, we're not using this data as an accusation on anyone. That's not what we're doing. This is, what do our people feel about our districts? How do we make it better? That's all it is. And that's all it should be used for. PTA. I want to go to some of the PTA meetings in January to talk about some of the results. I think you guys all have the meeting at the same time, though, so we're going to have to work that out, the January meeting. Um, but I want to go back to the PTA, answer some questions, present some of the findings. Don't worry, I'm not going to do all fifty slides. Don't worry, it won't be that long. Um, there were eighty-seven, by the way, and we're going to have like, all of those, I think there was eighty slides. We're going to have those up on, for everyone to see. We took some of them out there a little redundant, that's all, but it breaks it down further. And then I definitely want to utilize this data to inform course recommendations and budget development. So we're in that process now. What does that mean for the things we're going to recommend for next year? What does that mean for our budget? And I want to dig a little deeper on the question of tutors. So why are we having tutors? And why do six percent of our kids not know if they have them? So, um, those are some definite areas for us to take a look at, uh, going forward, and I'm very interested to see on that. And then, of course, we're going to end with game on. Let's go. We know where we are right now, and now it's time to go forward. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin.
No problem, sorry, that was really long.
It's okay. Do any board members have any questions or comments for Mr. Gavin?
Sure, I'll get it started. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, that is, uh, an amazing treasure trove of information, right? It's a, it's a, a starting point from which we can go in so many different directions. And I thank you, and, and I think it was a great idea that you brought to this board to hire this external data company to do this in a professional and organized fashion that gives us all of these points to which we can drill into a little bit more deeply. Um, I like that you started with this idea of, of the point of the climate survey was to use it to further positive school change, right? We are a district that is in a continuous cycle of improvement. We're looking to make positive change. And to do that strategically and carefully is so important, right? And, and one of the earlier slides you had in, in the cycle, that the elementary data presentation, the, the middle school data presentation, the high school data presentation, and this, these are all pieces of information, right? They're not, they're not knowledge, right? We're going to use these to make knowledge, and we're going to go forward in a positive way. If I could just take us back to that, um, slide with the takeaways.
Yep.
In terms of these different buckets, this is a very helpful way to think about, um, things like bullying falling under, you know, a cultural, um, category. Things like new courses or perhaps the ICT model in a programmatic, um, bucket. Instructional, um, it seems like something, and I think you mentioned this, is, is not necess, it, it can be connected to a board goal, but it can also be in a more immediate, um, you know, way to address some of these issues. Would you agree that that's something we can start on sooner than later?
Yeah, so for example, we already talked about connecting what students learn to real-world experiences. That's something we don't have to wait and do a PD on. That's something we just have to raise awareness on. So when principals talk at the next faculty meeting with teachers, one of the things they're going to share is, by the way, this is what the kids think, that we're not connecting it. So some of the, some teachers will be like, well, I try to do that. Well, we, I think we just have to do it a little bit more explicitly and a little bit more regularly. So I don't know how, like, we don't start off every math So I don't know how, like, we don't start off every math lesson by saying, this is how this particular adding decimals is going to lead to real world. We probably don't do that, but we do have to be explicit in saying, why do you need to know decimals? You guys have talked about money. That's why it's important to know, kind of thing. Or we know, you need to know about decimals because you need to know about how it relates to fractions, whatever that is. We need to connect different concepts. So that idea of trying to connect concepts between and among disciplines is also very important because then kids start to make the connections on their own and that's when learning gets really exciting, if that makes sense. So that's something we could do like right now.
Right. And, and that idea of right now also that, that you said, you know, this is a snapshot of where we are. I agree with that, but also because we have, to my knowledge, never done anything like, like this before. I think it's a snapshot of where we are now, but also maybe a little bit of where we've been, right? There, there are, many of us have been in this district for many years and so even though some of the questions asked about right now, we might also be thinking, okay, this is my general opinion of the district.
I would definitely agree with that. I think we have a lot of history. The fact that you can connect that we haven't asked things like this before and parents were looking for it, you saw that in the survey. The fact that parents are looking for that also might indicate to me that there's history built into there as well. So I agree. This is not just, how do we do this year right now? This is probably, this is my fifth kid coming through the district and I had a problem a while ago and I want to, I want to tell you about it so you fix it. Again, in a collaborative way, the, you know, parents are trying to give us information about that, teachers as well and students as well. But, you know, a student may be, a student may have given us, say, a six because they didn't like their ninth grade teacher and they're in 11th grade right now. So there's a lot of different reasons, not always all of them are apparent. But I do think this year is the opportunity for us to see not only the past, but the present.
Right. And, and the fact that we have had such a difficult two years. I mean, everyone has struggled through the pandemic more than two years now and the particular challenges of our district with our turnover in administration. I think it's really gratifying to see an 89% of, of stakeholders who say, I am, I am happy with the state of our district. I am pleased with the education that my child is getting in this district.
I agree. I think when I first saw those numbers, I was beyond gratified and it just showed, I think our administrators would agree with this too, it just showed how much and how passionate our community stakeholders are about supporting our schools. They want to support our schools. And they're very interested in where we go on the future. That is also, you know, the suggestions, the suggestion box that this became were very interesting about the things that they're looking for. So, you know, not, they're trying not only to tell us about the things they didn't like in the past or maybe not, don't like right now, but they're trying to help us drive the future and that's really important. You know, we want stakeholder conversation and that. I think that's, to me, that allows us to make better decisions. I think you talked about that, about having data and establishing data to make good decisions. All of this, all of these steps were things I talked about. From the time we met for, for a retreat, that was the goal of this, which was, let's establish and listen to our community so that we can make good decisions going forward. And then I would, you know, if we're going to do a survey again, it's a little bit more of right now. So if we did it again next year, it might be, okay, this is a perception of right now, a little bit less than that. But right now, I agree, we have some, some history baked into this.
I, I think it's, is this on? Can you hear me? I think it's important, the piece that you just brought up about the suggestion box. I know we're not sharing all of the suggestions, but we got a lot. And so I'm very thankful that the community, even though the survey was very specific about right now and you needed it, you had to do it at a time where it's normally not given because you wanted to know where we were right now. I think people did respond in the vast amount of comments that we got in the suggestion box or just comments, positive, negative, all kinds. And people wrote in things that were not necessarily elicited by the specific questions in the survey. So I think it's important to let the community know that, well, we're not going through all that. It would be impossible to do it here. It's voluminous. We are all going to look at it, discuss it, we have. And it's going to play a part in probably programmatic, instructional and cultural in how we.
I think that's, I think that's right to say. I mean, I think that, you know, the, the comments that were added, again, it's important that we keep people's comments confidential so that they can continue to give them to us. But that doesn't mean that we're not talking about it.
Right.
I mean, we talked about this as a group. That's why we're having a board retreat, right? So we could dive a little bit deeper and unpack not only the bar graphs that we saw, but then the comments we saw in context of the bar graphs. So I think that's really important for us as a working group, all of us together, to be on the same page about that and be intentional and purposeful about how we design the future from what we heard right now.
It was important to hear from people's comments, both staff, students. The fact that so many people wrote things in was wonderful.
Yeah. And that's what I was looking for. I was looking for that kind of level of feedback. I, I know that, you know, you may ask, how do you feel your school is safe? And you may get a comment that says, I want more recess, right? You may get that from an elementary school. Kids, that was not the question, but they want to tell you what they want to tell you. And it's important to understand, everyone out there, that we're listening. That those comments are not thrown away, that I can tell you right up on my computer screen right now, I have the secondary school comments all the time. Anytime I get a free moment, I'm reading them again. I'm reading them again. Because it's important for me to know and then follow up with kids about what they meant by that.
So thank you for doing it. Thank you for listening. We've been asking for it. Communication was one of the biggest things that we were seeking in a new superintendent and you heard us and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for conducting the survey and for giving us such a thorough analysis of the results. I, I too was pleased with, with the amount of positive feedback that we received from the community on how our schools are doing, how we're performing and how we're serving children. Some of my takeaways from, from looking at the results and then hearing the presentation tonight really revolve around what our secondary students are saying about, you know, their feeling of their education. I was definitely a little bit, I guess, surprised that 63% of our, only 63% of our secondary students feel that their individual needs are being met. I think that's something that's really important to take a look at is that we're seeing kids as individuals. We, we know who kids are, what their needs are, what their wants are, and that we're doing our best to really try to meet those needs. We obviously can't be everything for everyone in every moment. But that feels like a large amount of kids who, who may be falling through cracks in certain places.
And that might be different. Sorry to interrupt, but that might be, I wanted a course that we don't have. It might be, in the course I, I'm in, I feel like I'm just part of the course. I'm not being addressed as an individual. That might be a number of different things. It might be that, you know, I wanted a, you know, a computer science course that, you know, I wanted level five computer science, whatever that is, and we don't have it. So there's a lot of different things for us to unpack and that's why, to go back to Ms. Farazani's point, the comments are also important. So I totally agree with that. Yep.
Yep. That part and then also just really looking at only 37% of the students felt that the education that we're providing is excellent. That's, and I know that you spoke to that, wanting to see those numbers tick up and I too would really like to see those numbers tick up. I think that this district has all the potential and the resources in the world to offer the best academic experience on Long Island in New York State. So that's definitely a goal of mine on the board, to see that number tick up. And then I also agree that we need to make our schools more accessible and welcoming for our caregivers. That was another point that I think at the elementary schools are, the school is more naturally inviting, especially as a parent of a younger child. I think parents are also more engaged with children when they're younger. And then as they, you know, they grow up, that engagement just inherently kind of wanes off. But, you know, working in a school, in a middle school, I do think schools, especially after COVID, have become very inaccessible to parents because they were closed and while the doors have opened, they're opening slowly. I think at present, our PTAs have been the largest driver of family engagement in the community and they do an excellent job with what they do. But I would really love to see the district take more ownership of getting parents into the buildings, inviting parents in, having more informational meetings, again, especially as a parent of a child who's going to be transitioning to a new school. I don't know what to expect as a parent. I don't know what the curriculum is like. I don't know what the expectations of the building are. And I think that earlier and.
More regularly.
Yes, thank you. My vocabulary is terrible tonight. That we can make those communications, I think the more that our parents are going to trust the school district and trust in what their children are going to be experiencing. So I think overall, again, the, we, we have our comments. We clearly have our data that will inform how we move forward. And, you know, in addition to thinking about knowing our why, I also would really like to think about, you know, what impact do we hope to have? What is our big goal? What's the big idea? What are we striving for? And in addition to, you know, looking at having that inform our goals moving forward, I, I would also kind of like to consider like it informing our mission as well, looking at our mission statement. Does that statement still serve true as to what we are doing, what we want to do and where we want to be? How does this data change that? Maybe it doesn't, maybe it does. But really just having like an overall robust conversation about what the Rockville Center schools are going to be and how we're going to meet everyone's needs.
I thi, I think there's room for having those discussions. I think it's also important for us to talk about the fact that the reason we, I needed to know all this before. I didn't want to come in and say, I don't like this particular mission statement. We're going to do something different without talking to people. I don't think that's good leadership. I don't think that establishes trust. So it was really important for me to have dialogue in many different areas. Going to PTA meetings, going to parent events, just honestly, sitting on the sidelines of games. I've heard more on the sidelines than I have in the PTA meetings. No offense, guys. But there was a lot of very direct feedback. And I think it's important for me, I process all of that. We share, we work together as a team. I think it's also really important to acknowledge that our team members are outstanding. That all of us have been working together as a central office, as a building administration, all of our principals, our assistant principals, guidance counselors, support personnel. We've all been talking about exactly what you're talking about in terms of what are we doing and why are we doing it? And that goes to mission. It goes to vision. It goes to defining what, you know, preferred future could be. And then outlining the action steps that we need to get there. And that's how we move forward, you know? We first started this, the goals were about putting in systems for continuous improvement. Every one of the goals is about establishing a cycle so that we're looking at ourselves constantly, listening to what people say, and then we're saying, we've done this for a while. Is this still a good practice or not? And if it's not, what are we going to do differently? If it is, great. If it needs to just be expanded, great, whatever that is, but ask those questions. And it's not about accusing people of doing something wrong. It's all about how do we build from an asset-based approach? We have so much strength here and that's why I think it's really important for everyone to understand that 89% good or excellent isn't a very strong response. It's wide. I'd like to see it a little deeper.
Thank you.
Did I interrupt? I'm sorry.
No, that was pretty much it. I mean, I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to, you know, seeing how we actualize this change. So thank you.
I agree with Dr. Downing that it's so great that after a couple of really tough years, there's such a positive outlook. I really do think that you and your team have a direct impact on how people are feeling right now cumulatively plus right now. So we appreciate your leadership and positive attitude you've brought to the district. I think it's felt very widespread. So thank you for that. And I'm also glad that there is work to do because otherwise you'd feel really bored here.
I probably would, yeah.
You know, wouldn't have so much to do.
Yeah.
But to that end, it's really about what to do next. So I know it's, we're talking about it, we're looking at it, and I, and I trust that we are. And I believe that our parents and everybody will trust that we are. But when you have these big perception gaps, I'm just curious, how do you tackle some of these larger conversations? Do you, do you task force them out? Do you see what their overlaps might be? Because for an example, you know, one, one area for concern for me was how students might feel that people might be treated unfairly. So we've invested a lot into our elementary counselors and our guidance counselors and our social workers. So, you know, if we task force it out to people that are on the ground level, then there's overlap because if that improves, then maybe some of the bullying comments improve. And I'm just interested to know, how do you actually tackle some of these things? Because there are some major issues overlapping.
First thing you do is you start by identifying it, right? So you start by identifying it and, and saying, this perception gap exists. The second part is sitting down with the practitioners first, the practitioners first and the students as well. But usually you start with the practitioners and you say, this is what is felt. What do you think the reasons are for this? Let's work this out. Let's brainstorm this out, what the reasons are. And some people may not know. And then that's a conversation about why we wouldn't know that. So then we would have to, you know, almost like project a little bit and talk to the kids. And then what we try to do is we contrast what the students think and what the adults think. And somewhere in the middle are action steps, almost all the time. It's, it's not perfect, but Dr. Moriarty is an absolute maven when it comes to having protocols for leading discussions like this. That, sorry. But she does this stuff all the time and there is a lot of different ways to structure a conversation so that no one in that conversation feels attacked. No one feels that it's their fault that this perception gap exists, but it's something for us to work on. And that comes from honesty and trust, right? So what we're trying to do all the time is allow people, I know people use the word safe space all the time, but we're allowing people to feel safe, not only in the building physically, but the ability to come up to and talk about an issue. And have an open and honest conversation. I gotta be honest, sometimes the conversations are really hard. We're going to have a conversation with kids about their perceptions and teachers of their perceptions, about why kids would be treated unfairly. And when we talk about gender identity and race and religious identity and culture, those conversations are not always easy to have. But there are way to, there are ways to do it and structure it that our social workers know how to do, that Dr. Moriarty knows how to do, that Dr. Hood knows how to do better than I do in terms of how do we structure conversations like that along with our principals so that we see positive change? I will tell you this. One of the first stories that Mr. Murphy told me was about an incident that happened when he was a principal a few years back. And it was centered around race and there was conversations about race. And one of the things the kids took away was that the, the building principal listened to what they had to say. That was one of the things. When they were angry was when they were disagreed with. They understood that we listened, but they didn't like the outcome. So there, you got to be able to separate both. So first we have to unpack reasons, then we have to talk about what are positive ways to do it. And I could tell you, we have enough wisdom in this district to work on it. Doesn't mean we're going to solve it right away and it doesn't mean we're ever going to solve all of it. There will always be issues for us to solve. We have 4,000 human beings that we're dealing with. There are going to be differences. But it does mean that kids need to feel safe to come up and talk to about it and say, I'd like to do something about it. And I can tell you that our, our secondary students feel very free to come up and tell you what they think, how they think and what you should do about it. So that's good. I already, I had the DECA club. I didn't, I didn't even know we had a DECA club at the time. They scheduled a meeting with me and they said, this is what we need from you to help make this better. Advocating for it. Professional, polished, and they felt safe to do it. So those are conversations that we can have and I can tell you that kids have conversations that are important and they have their own wisdom about how to make things better.
Yeah, I think too, one of the goals for the conversations is, like you said earlier about like instructionally, short-term fixes versus like the long-term programmatic solutions. Because for students to not feel how their coursework is connecting to life, maybe if there's more course offerings that fit, you know, future plans and things like that, that might solve those problems.
You are speaking my language 100%.
So hopefully that's what happens. I love that you did, that you've done this and I think that we need to repeat. One thing that we had talked about early on, and I know your reasoning for wanting to have it in the fall, but also data can be kind of skewed from your sixth and ninth graders that are just new to buildings after only a couple of months. So I'm interested to have that repeated and see how they feel about their buildings, their trusted adults, their feeling connectivity to the, the schools that they're in where they might not feel that as much in the fall of their first semester somewhere, but that might grow. And I'd also be interested in doing something similar with our post, with our alumni, with our post-high school grads. How those things actually are applying to their life, to their choices, whether they do college or career, both. Because we've talked about that as well and I'm, and I'm interested in, there's so much conversation for parents that are kind of in it with, you know, what was applicable to college applications and what colleges liked certain things. And that, that conversation is, has been repeated here over the time I've been on the board. AP versus IB, credits taken, not taken. I just think that if we're looking at the whole district, that that piece needs to be included so that we make sure that everything we do intuitively K to 12 is what we intend to be for the students post-12.
And do they recognize it?
Right.
Right? Right? So we have, I believe, Ms. Flanagan told me that we have over five hundred email addresses as Alumni Association now. So that is an opportunity for us to at least solicit some, elicit some feedback from our alumni. We also have the opportunity to talk to when our seniors graduate or have just graduated, that we have the opportunity to reach out to them and talk to them about, you've had a semester of college or you had a year of college or a post-secondary experience. What did you find positive about your school experience? Did you feel prepared? You know, I did see, we, I did see an old archive of videos in, that talked to a bunch of different alumni. One of the things that came back from the alumni, they interviewed about twelve different alumni, different age groups, you know, some were early thirties, some were early twenties. And one of the things I thought was really interesting was how well they prepare, they felt prepared for writing papers. So, you know, the alumni came back and said, you know, the kid in my dorm room, my freshman year, couldn't write a paper, I had no problem. I had no problem. So that to me was good. But we also then heard, like, I wish I had a little bit more computer science before I went into this. Or I wish I had, you know, a different, more statistics or something like that, or a business course or a different business experience to prepare me for, let's say they're studying business. They only had maybe two courses in business, maybe they wanted three. So that, I think, zeroes in on some of the things you were talking about, about kids feeling their individual needs being met through different course opportunities. It does a lot of different things and it connects it to real life. So there are really good opportunities out there for us to talk about. I'm excited to come back in February after working with the team, all of us together, and make some recommendations about instructional offerings in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you again to everybody who took the time to complete the survey. And Mr. Gavin, thank you. From very early on, you said this was just a piece, but a very important piece to the puzzle in terms of establishing a sense of our current reality as a district so that we can work together to move forward towards a desired vision for our future. So thank you and your team for all the work that you've already put in and you'll continue to put in to have these important conversations moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items for discussion, policies. We have one apology, policy, sorry, at stage one tonight, twenty-one fifty, travel reimbursement. We were looking to add a section.
Yeah, it's really just.
Ms. Bartels, you want to just explain?
Sure. Yeah, there's been some confusion exactly what tips and gratuities would be allowed. The policy doesn't specify it, so this kind of puts in a more specific guideline.
Any comments or questions for twenty-one fifty?
Just in terms of cleaning it up, I just noticed on the first page, day travel, the first line, when an employee engages in travel, which does not result in overnight travel, there's just the letter Y there. Know your why, we found our why.
Anything else? Can I move this on to stage two?
Yep.
Yes. Then we have policies currently at stage two. Policy fifty-five forty, publication of the district's annual financial statement. Any comments or questions? Nope. Move this on?
Yes.
Fifty-five fifty, use of federal funds for political expenditures. Move this on?
Yes, yes.
Fifty-six ten, insurance. We had, we looked at suggested revisions on this one at the last meeting. Can we move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Fifty-six twenty, inventories. Fixed asset inventories, accounting and tracking. Good to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
And fifty-six thirty, facilities inspection, operation and maintenance. Good to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gavin, opportunity for superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to say congratulations to all of our athletes from the fall season. We're super happy that the winter season is off and running. As I mentioned before, it is concert season. We've seen four wonderful shows already, and we're looking forward to the five additional one over the next few weeks. I'm also looking forward to this, it will be a new experience for me, Covert's Ballroom Dancing. Can't wait to see what that looks like. I am really impressed with our middle school students and what they've done with their Broadway review. That was great. I do want to let the board know that I attended at the invitation of our local synagogue, the Never Again Committee, which has to do with Holocaust education. We had an absolutely wonderful and frank discussion. As many people know, that Holocaust education is mandated by New York State. We are covering it in a, we are covering it here in Rockville Center as well and meeting that mandate. But the members of the Never Again Committee offered me a plethora of resources that are going to support that education that we're doing here right now. I look forward for a productive partner, partnership, and I thank them all for it. The other piece I wanted to talk about, I had the opportunity to go meet with the Biology Club. And I thought we were going to talk about biology, but they didn't want to talk about biology. They wanted to say, they want to talk about bioinformatics and how they had to learn, some of them had to learn Python on their own because we don't have a computer science class that teaches them Python. So first I said, it's incredible, young lady, that you learned Python on your own from a book. And then we showed them a software that we've purchased here in the district that can teach them to work on Python. And we introduced it to the entire Biology Club, and now I have kids already on Level Two Python because they're really interested about the idea of combining their passion for biology and for information. So I was really, really, I was blown away by the Biology Club when I said, who's interested in programming? They all went like this. I mean, they are Biology Club kids, they're pretty good, they're rule followers. They're all like this, raising their hand, nobody shouted out, it was really nice. I also want to, you know, let everyone know that many of the members of our school district, of our administration, our board and our village attended the MLK Thanksgiving celebration. That was great. I did get an acting critique from one of our Watson students that saw me in the Halloween play as the Caterpillar. Basically, she says I could do a better job. I didn't take it personally, she liked the green wig, but she had issues with the way I read my lines. So, but it was really fun and we had a great job again, we had a great time again at creating community. The other thing I wanted to thank everyone for is Dr. Moriarty brought in a consultant to work with our administrators, and I'm going to kick it over to Nicole just to talk briefly about the wonderful two days we had with our principals and assistant principals. Dr. Moriarty.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin. We had a fantastic time working with our transformational leadership coach, and we explored brain-based approaches to developing teacher and administrator efficacy. It was, and it will continue to be, an opportunity for us to grow together as an administrative team and helping us support ecological change that is also, then also brain-based. So those that we're working with and we're moving, moving in new directions will be able to do so very easily. So we were able to learn how the brain learns and responds to stimulus, and we're also developing a common language and approach that will help complement our work in actualizing the Board of Ed goals as well as helping us actualize the takeaways that we have from our presentation tonight. And we'll be able to do those things in real time. So it's really important that we continue to work as a team, that we continue to cultivate the conditions that will lead to sustained and meaningful change and educational outcomes for all of our learners. So it's really great. And then our teachers are going to be working with Rob as well.
We are really excited to continue to work with transformational leadership. I will tell you this, that I am so thrilled with the level of technical expertise, the dedication and care of our administrators. They are open to new ideas, they are willing to hear feedback, and we are going to work really hard on all the information we heard about tonight to make things better for our kids. Last but not least, this is our last meeting in December, so I wish everyone in Rockville Center a healthy and happy holiday season. I want to point out that our chamber singers absolutely were amazing at singing at the tree lighting and that we had a wonderful and packed house holiday meet and greet today for the Board of Education. So I wish, again, wish everyone a healthy and happy holiday season. And the next time we see you, happy twenty-two-three.
Thank you. Opportunity for board members, Mrs. Messier.
I'd just like to start by thanking Mrs. Elias and Mrs. Monsour and the middle school students who came to perform for us tonight. You were excellent. I'd also like to congratulate the cast and crew of Clue. I went, attended with my daughter, and she and I were both so impressed with the entire performance. I think she's ready to join, to join theater as soon as she gets to that middle school. So, thank you. I'd also like to congratulate our student athletes for all of your academic and athletic achievements. Congratulations to our district's musicians. I personally am looking very forward to attending my first winter concert of the season this coming Monday at Covert. I'd like to thank Mr. Gavin and the administrative team for administering the climate survey. I truly appreciate the time and effort that went into the analysis of the results and into the presentation. And I do look very forward to hearing about the district's plan to actualize positive instructional, programmatic and cultural change. And finally, I'd like to wish the members of our school community who celebrate a happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas and a joyous Kwanzaa. I hope that everyone has a very restful winter break.
Thank you. Mrs. Farzani?
I too want to thank Ms. Elias and Ms. Monsour and the Southside Middle School for review cast for performing for us this evening. It's always one of my favorite things to watch you all sing and dance. Thank you to our coaches and athletes that were honored this evening. We did have our holiday open house, and it was wonderful to see all of our teachers, administrators and staff come together to share a little holiday cheer. Thank you to everyone for what you do all year, it's just a small token of our thanks. Thank you to Ms. Celeberty for organizing it as usual, it was wonderful, and for all your hard work all year that you do for us. I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, joyous Kwanzaa. And anything else that is celebrated that I may have missed, I hope you all have a healthy and happy time with your families.
Thank you, Mrs. Hackett.
Agree. I mean, this is, it's always such a fun night when we get to see the students come. I think that lifts everybody and reminds everybody about what we're doing here. So thank you for the Broadway Review. I agree, Clue was amazing, right on the stage here, not just the performances, which were stellar and just amazing, but the rooms moving across the stage, the artwork, the direction, the time that went into every, everybody in back of the stage and in front, just did such a great job. I was so proud when I left here, my husband and I had, that was our night out together. Really enjoyed it, but it was beautiful. And the Broadway Review as well for the middle school, the students are just, they're happy up there, and this is what we want to do. We want to provide environments where every student can shine, and they can. Our athletes are shining as well, as we saw, our coaches are amazing. Really proud of all of the accomplishments, our students who are signing their D1 schools, that's very exciting for their families as well, so congratulations to all of them. Dr. Zuar, I know this is his busy season right now with concerts, and that's always fun for us as well. You know, you just have to reflect on, at the end of this year, where we think about what better footing we're all on than we were a year ago now with concert season and being able to come and enjoy, you know, basketball season's starting. We can go and attend the games, we can cheer on the students, we can go to concerts, we can be there happily. And it's just so nice to end off the year on a positive note. I think everybody's been through so much. So to that end, I echo a happy and healthy holiday. I think everybody's sick at the moment, so hopefully that means you will be healthy for your holidays. And I do wish everybody a happy, healthy end of the year. Thank you for all you do, especially our parents, working with parents on the collegiate level right now. And there's a common theme with the parents at the collegiate level, which is that they've been involved, as all of you have, since before kindergarten. So I really do appreciate all the work that our parents do for this district. They do make it so much better. And to our administration led by Mr. Gavin for all the positivity and just the team that's been built here is bar none, just the best team we could have hoped for. So thank you to everybody and happy, healthy.
Thank you. Dr. Downing?
Agreed, thank you. I also want to wish everyone a happy inclusive schools week. It's a great chance to celebrate the progress that our schools have made in providing a supportive and quality education to an increasingly diverse student population. We're always a work in progress to ensure that our schools continue to improve our ability to successfully educate all of our children. Thank you, and congratulations to all of our performers from the middle school and the high school. Sharing their talents on stage is very brave, and I loved seeing your performances this fall. Really so professional, and your dedication to your art is wonderful to see. Congrats also to our student athletes, those who were honored here tonight for your outstanding athletic performances, individuals and as teammates. And we really learned such great lessons from sports in terms of teamwork, leadership, cooperation, time management, and you've all made memories for a lifetime for sure. And I feel like there's a theme here tonight, and it's performance and teamwork, right? Everyone gives a great individual performance, but when we come together as an ensemble or a team, we really shine. So thank you to our musicians, our student musicians, who have been and will be performing at our winter concerts. And I totally agree, you do not need to be a family member of one of the performers to enjoy it. So please do come out, support the arts and get in the holiday spirit. I also just want to thank our administrators who have presented at all of the Board of Ed meetings this fall. It's truly hard to believe that Mr. Gavin and very key members of his team have only been in place for such a short time. And we really can see how much we can accomplish when we work together cooperatively with our eyes set on our goals. And I agree, the climate survey data shows us that overall, we really do enjoy wide support from our students, parents, teachers. There's always work to be done, always room to improve because that is the nature of learning and education. I have no doubt, if we work together, we can address these concerns and make the improvements that we need. So happy holidays and thanks.
Thank you. Congratulations again to our student performers that were here tonight and to our student athletes that were honored here, as well to all of your parents, teachers and coaches that have supported you every step along the way. You certainly made us all proud, and you will continue to make us be proud. Congratulations to the cast and crew of the Middle School Review and Clue. Both wonderful performances that we all enjoyed attending. And to echo Mrs. Hackett, really, the backstage crew as well up here, just watching the sets and the sound effects and sitting here during the Clue performance was really, it made me very grateful to be part of this community and part of this district. So thank you to all involved. Thank you again to all those who took the time to complete the survey and to you, Mr. Gavin, for setting a clear path and process for us as a system to reflect, identify areas of strength and areas in need of improvement, and for being committed to that since day one. I'm grateful for your leadership, and I look forward to our continued work in the new year. I wish you, your family, our entire staff and their families, our students, parents, guardians and entire community a healthy and happy holiday and new year. And I would be remiss if I didn't echo, she's not going to like this, but Mrs. Celeberty, thank you very much for all you do every single day for us as a board and for us as a team up here. And today was just one snapshot of everything that you do, so thank you. Okay, at this time, I would like to open up the mic for visitors. The public in its comments is requested to refrain from making any direct references to students or staff members that could be considered critical of their performance or their character. Such references to individual students or staff members are inappropriate in a public forum and should instead be conducted in private conversation with appropriate members of the staff. Please state your name and address when you come to the mic, keep your comments to three minutes, and remember that you are addressing the board as a whole, not any individual board member.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roseman Metu. I'm a parent of a child with special needs in the school for the past three years now. Mr. Gavin, let me start by thanking you. That was a tremendous, beautiful write-up that you gave us, I really enjoyed that. Yes, my, there's a lot to talk about, and this is not the right forum, okay? So I decided to come because I've made several attempts to get in touch with Mr. Bartels, the assistant superintendent, can you all hear me well?
We can hear you, yeah.
Yes. And for some reason that, am I too loud?
No, you're good.
You're fine.
For some reason that was never explained to me, my, I never got my replies to my letters to Mr. Bartels. Mr. Bartels, I'm not even sure if you did receive the letters, but I have, you know, the school received the letters, they were stamped. I've been making steadfast efforts to speak with the acting superintendent for quite some time concerning my child, and I never got that opportunity. So, Mr. Gavin, what is the best way for me to reach yourself and Mr. Bartels directly? and Mr. Bartels directly?
Talk to Ms. Celebrity. We'll have an appointment next week.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful to be here. And a happy season to everyone. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Happy season, Ms. Metu. Nice to meet you as well. Look forward to. Thank you.
Good evening, Jeff Greenfield, Uwekort. I came here tonight to wish the board and the administration happy holiday season and an upcoming, successful 2023 school year. Mr. Gavin, I, sorry I came in late on your presentation. I found it very interesting. Will it be available online?
The whole meeting was recorded, so you'd be able, the whole meeting was recorded, so you'll be able to see that. It will be posted tomorrow.
Okay.
So it'll be online, but if you wanted to see the presentation with the comments, you can just watch it.
But be on watching it, will it be online?
The slides will also be online, yes.
When I'm on the airplane, I like to watch these things. I can't watch, they don't allow me to watch the video. Thank you. With respect to the last meeting and your comments, Mr. Gavin, with respect to the student, respect and dignity, in all my years coming here and all my years as a public official, I was never spoken to the way I was spoken to at the last meeting. And I had a lot of comments from people that watched it, as well as people that were here. I think I'm entitled to an apology. And moving forward into the future, I come here in search of answers to questions, not looking to make FOIL requests. I'm disappointed that I can't get answers to some basic questions, but if that's the way you want to conduct the meeting by business of this district by FOIL, I'll do that. And with respect to your comment with respect to the air conditioning in the gym, when this was put to a bond issue, I was told that the air conditioning system for this auditorium was also gonna service the gym with a transfer switch, and that we wouldn't have to go through the expense, I'm being your historian again, I'm sorry. And we weren't gonna go through the expense of air conditioning the gym, that the ductwork is in place and it'd be a transfer switch. And we don't have use of both this auditorium and the gym at the same time. So please look into it. I don't need an answer now. I don't want my time used up with an answer. And that is something that I think in a positive vein, I could put forward. It's before everybody up here was involved in the district, before they did all the other air conditioning, they did it in this room first because of the shows and things of that nature. Again, happy, healthy holiday season.
Thank you, you too. Anybody else? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the receipt of financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve items for actions A through J?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is January 6th. Happy New Year.
Happy holidays, guys.